Good evening, everyone. We'll bring the November 22nd City Council Meeting in order. Please rise for a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt an ice agenda.
A motion made, seconded any discussion. Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations, our monthly Anoka County Sheriff's Report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, the public.
Hello.
I'm Lieutenant Derek Peters. I was recently promoted last week, so this is my first go around here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm also thankful enough to have Commander Shelley Orlando here for moral support, but anyway, cutting to the chase, October had a total of 528 calls for service. Nine of them were property-related crimes. Six of them were assaults. There were three DUI-related arrests and 29 traffic citations. At the close of October, our staff have been dispatched to a total of 4,510 calls for service within the city limits, which is actually nine more than where we were at the end of October last year. So a few of them that stuck out to me while reviewing reports. One of our first DUI arrests earlier in the year, Deputy Derner was on routine patrol in the city of East Bethel. He stopped a vehicle for speeding and failing to drive in a single lane. The driver smelled of an alcoholic beverage and admitted to having consumed alcohol earlier in the evening. The driver was asked to perform standardized field sobriety testing and subsequently failed. The driver then provided a preliminary breath test sample of .218 and was arrested. The driver was then booked into the Anoka County Jail for third-degree DUI. Over 08 or more within two hours, speeding, failure to drive in a single lane, and no proof of insurance. Secondly, Deputy Jesse Cutler was attempting to fill up with gas at 237th and 65 at the Dynamart when he heard a loud squeal of tires from a vehicle traveling toward the intersection of 237th Avenue Highway and Highway 65 Northeast. The vehicle appeared to be driving in a jerking manner, and it appeared as though the driver was struggling to accelerate the vehicle in a smooth fashion. Deputy Cutler continued to pump gas in the lot and watched as the driver prematurely stopped several feet from the intersection, accelerated, slowed down. The driver stopped the vehicle in a parking lot near a gas pump next to where Deputy Cutler had his squad parked. He made contact with the driver, who smelled of an alcoholic beverage. He also noticed that the front end of the vehicle was heavily damaged from an unknown impact. The driver told Deputy Cutler that he believed that he was in Plymouth. Driver then became uncooperative by yelling and screaming at Deputy Cutler. Standardized field sobriety tests were conducted, and a DMT test was later obtained at the sheriff's office with the result of .17. The male was later booked into Anoka County Jail. Deputy Matthew O'Connor and his canine partner Eli were dispatched to an address in the city on a report of a male who had several outstanding warrants. When Deputy Cutler arrived, he, excuse me, when Deputy O'Connor arrived, he contacted the homeowner and asked them if the male he was looking for was inside the home. Deputy O'Connor was allowed into the home and was directed toward a basement bedroom where the male had been staying. When Deputy O'Connor walked into the bedroom, he looked into an open closet and noticed two feet sticking out from underneath the mattress. Deputy O'Connor advised the male he was under arrest and to come out of the closet. The male was compliant and taken into custody. He was later transferred to Isani County deputies and booked into their jail for an active Isani County, Scott County, and Ramsey County warrant. Late last week, I spoke to the property manager at the now vacant Cambria Hills Building, located at 975-189th Avenue Northeast. The property manager expressed some concerns and had been reporting some extra traffic pulling in and out of the lot and around the south side of the building during nighttime hours and had some concerns about the condition of the property. He was requesting extra patrol and wanted to get over some video surveillance to us to see if we could identify these vehicles and see if we could take the trespassing complaints up the chain and make sure that these people were notified to stay away from the business. Ultimately, we haven't seen that video yet, but when I do, we will follow up accordingly. The business reported to me that they'll be adding no trespassing signs as a deterrent to anybody passing by in the area. Just some other things to note for everybody that's watching and listening this evening. We've had a slight uptick in the number of theft from vehicle reports. Usually, these occur in the nighttime hours, usually carried out by foot traffic in some of the busier areas of the city. So as a good reminder, just make sure, as the winter months approach, take care of your property, bring it in with you, unlock your vehicles, just to make sure. I think that will deter anybody from taking any opportunities that they may have with an unlocked vehicle or an unlocked home for that matter as well. So, thank you for allowing me to visit with you folks tonight and the opportunity to give you a quick update.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Yes.
I've had, seen people who've had pictures of, with their ring and other security cameras where they've taken packages or been scoping out the place and walking up to the door and walking around the house and stuff. Do they, do you guys follow up on that and try to identify those people, or is that just a lost cause?
Oh, good question, and certainly we will do everything in our power to follow up. Now, with that being said, you know, some people are wearing masks or clothing that we can't readily identify. So if anybody in the city has any concerns that are related to that, I would suggest calling 911. I speak to our deputy that works in the city or one of our countywide's. They'll collect the information, and if you have access to your video feed, however, some people have it, they can just get it sent to their phone or whatever else. That's certainly something that can be sent to us and we can follow up accordingly. Usually, we have a database where we just, you know, you're getting good physical descriptions of folks, and usually it's the same people doing it, whether it's in East Bethel or Ham Lake or somewhere else. And we have a group of investigators that are very, very good at connecting the dots, if you will. So certainly, if anybody has any questions, feel free to call 911 and we'll take your information, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
With Thanksgiving coming up and the rest of the holidays, will you have extra patrols out?
Yeah, on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, the sheriff's office has recently posted for overtime, an extra eight-hour shift. So that eight-hour shift is from 8:00 PM to 4:00 in the morning, just to add a little bit of extra personnel out on the roads to assist when needed. Is it a dedicated traffic car? No. Is it a dedicated patrol car? Yes, unless something else comes up. So certainly, we'll have extra enforcement out on the roads throughout the winter months.
Okay.
Anything else? Any questions from the audience tonight?
We do have TCD cars, but we don't have anybody signed up for the weekend currently.
What's a TCD?
Towards zero death, that's the alcohol saturation enforcement. It's all grant-funded, based through the state.
Good question.
I always consider that heckling, but okay.
I didn't want to forget, thank you.
I think it's a good question from the audience, myself.
Welcome, sir, and congratulations.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you again for having me and for the opportunity.
All right, thanks, Derek. Okay, on to our fire department monthly report. Chief Desharm.
Good evening. Good evening, Council and Mayor. So, October 2021, fire department responded to 71 calls, and they were made up of 54 medicals, four car crashes, eight alarms, either smoke or CO alarms, only one burning smoke call, which is great. And then, we had a couple of fire calls. One was, is listed as a public service, but it was really a stove that was on fire, and it was one of these self-cleaning ones. And a lot of times, when we go out on these, we don't open up the oven, we just let it burn out and try to keep the smoke down to a minimum. We did have, in October, we did have a garage fire, and it was extinguished quickly, but it did have about $15,000 in building damage and probably caused, we estimate, another $5,000 in content loss. All right, Thanksgiving's coming up, and there's a lot of ways to cook your turkeys, okay? And I understand that a lot of people, including myself, like to cook them on a grill or deep fry them. Don't do that in the garage, okay? And I'm serious. Do it outside. I know it's going to be cold or cooler. I'm not sure if it's going to be windy. I was trying to get that forecast before I got here. But so many times in my career, especially I'm frying the turkeys, something's gone wrong and they've had them like partially in a garage or, you know, by the soffit of the building, and they've burnt down the garage or the house. Don't do that, okay? Make sure you got your clearance around you and be safe. Same thing when you're using either a Traeger or whatever you're using on a grill, you know, just be aware of your surroundings. Everything will be fine. On open burning, I just want to make a comment that as soon as we get a little bit of snow cover, we'll need two to three inches of snow cover, then we'll be switching over to allowing people to burn during the day. But you still need a permit, okay? Still need a permit in the city. Even though the DNR, you go on their website and say, they'll say you don't need one, you don't need one of their permits, but you need one of the city's permits, okay? So just keeping that in mind. I looked at the numbers of calls real quick before I left, and we're at 760 calls for the year. Our record was last year at 699. So obviously, we're past that, well past that, and well on the way to 800 calls. So just to keep that in mind, we're, you know, I think pushing our crew pretty hard, and we'll see how, if that's a trend or if that's just, you know, one-year, one-and-done type thing. Answer, any questions from Council?
Questions from Council?
Going back to deep frying a turkey. So you have your big pot and all the grease and everything, and if something were to occur where there's a fire, what is the best process to put that out? How should you prepare? What kind of fire extinguisher or any other methods?
Well, remember, it's a grease fire. It's a grease fire, so.
No water?
Yeah, you don't want to use water on it. You know, you can use an ABC. You know, in restaurants, we always have them have a K extinguisher. You don't have that at home. You have a dry camp. But the first thing you got to do is call 911, okay? Don't hesitate, call, because we would rather be canceled or find out the, you know, the fire is out when we got there and just go home than to be delayed and have a fire double, you know, every couple minutes in size, because that's what's going to happen. So number one, you know, call 911. If it's safe, try the extinguisher. If it's not, get out of the way. It's not worth hurting yourself or your family.
I'd like to have you clarify the fire permit. You need a fire permit for your fires and not a small recreational, or the?
You're absolutely correct. A recreational fire, you do not need a permit for. A recreational fire is three feet wide by three feet, and not more than three feet high. By definition, that's a recreational fire. You can't be burning yard waste in your recreational fire, but you can burn logs and that type of thing. You do not need a permit for that. If you're going to do, which a lot of people do in the city, if you're going to do like a pile burn, a pile burn is when you take all the, you know, you cut down a tree and you, you know, pile it up, you need a permit for that. And then, when you do that, you need to be sure you're 25 feet away from anything that could catch fire too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the audience? Well, I'm going to follow your tradition of your turkey and talk about ice safety on Coon Lake. I usually say this every year at this time.
And I understand there was people out on the channel.
We were just looking at a photo of somebody on the channel today, so.
Yeah, I understand there was people out on the channel on Coon Lake. I can't tell you, you know, how thick the ice is. Can't be more than.
It's a couple inches.
Couple inches, yeah, so.
And just, you know, be safe, be smart, and then keep in mind that if you do go through, you know, our rescue teams are going to be there.
Right.
And they'll be there to help save that person, but they're also putting themselves at risk too, and sometimes needlessly. So just, again, just be smart when you're on the ice, so. Because we've had, we've had injuries with our staff before during rescues, so please keep that in mind, so. That's it.
All right.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. On to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'd like to pull item C, too.
C?
C as in cat.
Okay. I'm going to pull B, C, and D all for the same reason, so. Any other?
I'd like to pull item E.
E as well?
E, taco.
So we're down to the bill list. Any further discussion? To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. So on item B, which is the November 1st City Council Work Meeting minutes, on the first line, the title to the minutes is correct, but then the first line says regular city council meeting. If that can be changed. And then, it's a small detail, and I've been meaning to bring it up in the past, but it just keeps bugging me. I don't think, whoever's taken a minute is reading or listening close enough to the end. When adjournment, it always says VAS asks for discussion. I don't ask for discussion. Motions to adjourn are not debatable, so. So it's in there every minute, and I never said anything. Now I said it, so hopefully it won't be in there for any longer, so. So mine only one had item B?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item B with the noted changes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item C.
You want to go?
Was that?
I get B.
You had B?
Oh, C, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you had C. Did you pull AMC?
I pulled C, cat.
Yeah, we're on C.
Oh, C, okay.
Sorry.
Because you did too, right?
I did. For me, it was the same reasons.
Okay. I just have some corrections on page 38. It stated, with respect to the new service road, he had heard few complaints regarding the city being sold out. It should be the city selling out to the developer. And then the next sentence, he noted the city didn't receive, the city didn't pay a dime. And then on the last one, our grants came from COVID money and MINDOT, not the DNR. And with those corrections on, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Item C.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item D is a dog. I think I had the only one on that. I'll make a motion to approve item D with the changes previously discussed on adjournment.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item E.
Item E, first I want to welcome Morgan Mueller to our Public Works Maintenance, but I do have a question. Somebody asked me, and I don't know the answer, so I'm asking publicly, and I told them to watch the meeting if they couldn't come. What qualifications are used in that six-month period?
The performance is evaluated based on the job description by the public works manager, and then he makes a recommendation as to the lifting of the probationary status or the retain for additional period of time, but it's based on the job description.
So they have to perform everything on the job description.
That's correct, and if there is a stipulation too, that they have to get a CDL. Sometimes we hire people without a CDL, but they're required to get that within six months of their employment.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item E and consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. That completes the consent agenda. There is no new business. Then on to 781, Developers Agreement for Anderson Meadows Platt.
At the November 8th, 2021, City Council meeting, the developers agreement was discussed and tables. The developers agreement is required as part of the approval of the Anderson Meadows Platt. Craig Yelkum, City Engineer, drafted the agreement, and the city attorney recommend the changes to the draft that are included in your attachments. Attachment one is a clean copy of the draft. The city engineer and city attorney are in agreement with the language of the developers agreement. Staff requests city council to approve the developers agreement for Anderson Meadows as provided in attachment one.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of the developers agreement for Anderson Meadows as provided in our attachment one.
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you, Steve.
Happy Thanksgiving.
We meet in a couple weeks if you want to come into.
You want to come and see us again?
Thanks for all your patience.
Thanks, Steve.
Have a good evening.
On to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the November 8th, 2021, meeting of the East Bethel City Council, the council went into closed session pursuant to Minnesota's statute, section 13D, .05, subdivision 3A, to evaluate the performance of the city administrator. Pursuant to the statute, the city is required at its next open meeting, which is this meeting, to summarize its conclusions regarding that evaluation, and I will now provide that summary on behalf of the council. Council evaluated the city administrator in the following specified categories: city council relationships, public relations, employee relations, fiscal management, communication, quantity and quality of work, personal traits, and intergovernmental affairs. In each of these categories, the council members assign the city administrator a score from 1 to 3, with 1 defined as needs improvement, 2 defined as fully effective, and 3 defined as exceeded expectations. In each category, if the council member had no opinion, they could so indicate. Overall, the city administrator receives a total average score of 2.44 in these categories. The city council used this evaluation as an opportunity for discussion about the city administrator's achievements and areas for improvement. The council complimented the city administrator for his dedication, responsiveness to the council, and fiscal management. The council identified personnel management and human resources as an area in which the city administrator needs to improve. The council discussed several ideas for improvement in the area of personnel management, which would provide the city and the city administrator with sufficient tools and personnel support to effectively address personnel management. The council's personnel committee will be working on a plan to address personnel management, human resources improvements in the coming months. Mayor and council, I offer that as a summary of the discussion we had on November 8th, and if any member of the council has additional comments.
For, what was the score again?
2.44.
And what's 2 rate and what's 3 rate? In the rating scale?
Fully effective is 2, and exceeds expectations is 3.
Okay, so it's a, overall, it's a pretty good evaluation.
Okay, any questions, comments? All right. Thanks, Chris.
Absolutely.
Okay, on to city administrator, sorry, December work meeting agenda.
Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 6, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Items recommended for council discussion could include, may not be limited to the following: Sunrise River WMO, joint powers agreement amendments, broadband internet improvement and extension plan discussion, city council public forum and presentation protocols, and/or other items as requested by the city council. Staff recommends that city council set the topics listed above for December 6, 2021 work meeting agenda.
Jack, of these three items you have listed here, anything pressing, just so we know?
No, the only one is the Sunrise River WMO. They want our comments from a work meeting delivered to them as soon as possible. That's the only one that's really pressing. The other two can be postponed.
Okay.
Would be.
What's council thing? I will not be in attendance that night.
You're thinking counseling?
I don't think I'll be here there, and if I do, it'll be here, I might make it by 7:30 maybe, but.
Well, if it's just the WMO, can we add that to the regular agenda for the following meeting?
I think.
I know we got the hearing, but.
Yeah, I think we probably could. They're wanting that fairly quickly. We're the last ones to respond because of the way our work meeting schedules were. So Ham Lake will be doing theirs the same night. They're just wanting comments so they can get this scheduled. I can check with Jamie and see.
Can you send it email and let us respond via email?
Um.
Well, they'll be looking for official city comments and.
I mean, you could do that, but they wouldn't be official comments then. I mean, they could be read into the record.
Well.
Could we spend a few minutes this evening?
We don't have.
Oh, we don't have that. We don't have the information.
Well, why don't we try this? Why don't we, why don't you send it out to us? We can look at it, and if by chance none of us have any comments.
Okay.
That's pretty easy, so.
I'll send that out in the morning then.
Because one of the biggest sticking points was the percentage for each city, but that's going to stay the same, so.
Right. We already fought that.
That's not going to change, so.
Would, it sounds like it might just be three of us. If we would have a work meeting of the two absent, if they submitted their comments, and then we present them at that meeting, would then their comments then be official?
Well, we still can't send them comments for a work meeting.
No, what we're going to do, we're going to say, we discussed the work meeting, and we're going to authorize city council to take this direction. So essentially, what it is, it's basically pretty simple changes and amendments. There's only two things in there, is we're going to have to incur some costs for Jamie's time for doing this and for some legal fees to get this taken care of.
They just want, we're not ratifying anything, right?
Not at the work meeting, we won't be, no.
Yeah, but they're not asking us to do it anyway until they get everyone's comment.
That's correct.
And the cost between four cities, it's probably going to cost us like 1,500 bucks. You know, it's like 3,000 for an attorney and then whatever Jamie's time is, so we figured maybe 1,500 for each city.
Well, it's up to three of you if you want to have a work meeting.
Are they needing an attorney bar?
What's that?
What are they needing?
Why don't you send those, the information out, and if two council members, two council members could call a meeting, couldn't we?
Yes.
Okay, so if we need a meeting, then we could call it.
I find that, so we won't, we'll have to cancel the work meeting tonight.
Okay, so.
We can't cancel it without a meeting, so.
Oh, I'll make a motion to cancel the work. Oh, I'll make a motion to cancel the work meeting for.
I'll second it.
December sixth.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. You have another item, Jack?
I do have one more. Item seven G two is resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-six, delinquent citation fines and certifications. This is an update rather than an action item. But our last meeting, we tabled the fines and certifications for the delinquent enforcement code items because there were two presenters that presented objections. At that time, city council decided to table this matter, take those two off the assessment list. So what we've done is provided the new assessment list with those two objectors off there. And the resolution will be presented to Mayor Voss for his signature. This was approved at the last meeting with those two directions.
Okay, I was going to say, I thought we made motion to approve.
We did. I'm sorry about saying the table. It wasn't tabled. It was approved, but we had to go back and change the assessment list, which you have in your package.
So we've already approved the resolution?
Correct.
So what's the motion? The motion will be the table that goes with it or?
No, there is no table. I'm sorry, I misspoke on that. We approved the resolution the last time, but you did not sign the resolution because we had the two objectors that came that we did say that we would look at their items.
Oh, it's just signature.
Correct.
So this is just information?
Just information. No actions required. I just wanted to update you on that and show you the new list.
I didn't sign it because the table was incorrect, so. Okay, anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Staff report?
There, we've had some questions too about the term of Shelley Beck seat. Wanda McLaren was appointed to that seat, and that appointment runs through the election of November first, twenty twenty-two. Within ten days after that election, those votes have to be certified. And the end of that certification or with that certification, then that elected person to that position can't assume a council seat.
So you have a shorter term than you thought?
No, I knew that. No, I knew it was election.
That one will be a.
That one will be a two-year.
That's correct.
So there's a two-year, a four-year.
Four-year.
Two-year, four-year. Two, four years, a two-year, and the mayor.
That's all I have.
Everybody but Brian.
All right, council reports. Tim?
The only thing I have is the Fire Department had makeup training today, and I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. That's all I've got.
Suzanne?
I have a couple of things. First, there's a big scam going around regarding Coon Lake Community Center where people, I don't know who they are, but they're advertising vendor events there. And people are paying by PayPal, and there is no vendor event there. And this on December eleventh. I think there's one, might be one on the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth that weekend at the Thanksgiving. I also wanted to bring up regarding the town hall. There were a lot of issues that came up. And I'm just wondering if answers can be made to the public via our, the next, the future newsletters, like, you know, regarding the bike path. You know, just updates on the things that they addressed. The bike path, how residents can help, launch limits, the Coon Lake parking, just all the different stuff that they brought up. Because they bring it up there, and they're like, are we ever going to hear anything about what they brought up? And so I'm like, I don't know. Maybe they could put it in a newsletter or something because half the people don't watch these, and they're still calling and saying, are you guys going to ever discuss this, if it's ever going to be brought up? So I don't know. It's a suggestion. It's something to think about. It's whatever you guys think. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the changes in the gratitude firms thing that's been coming up. I think the public needs to know the consequences that gratitude firms is going to have. We have residents who pay big fines for violating their IUPs, and there are even lesser code violations, so. And that's all I have.
Okay, Brian. I have two items. November fifteenth, we had an EDA meeting. There wasn't anything necessarily new on that. It can be a Hill's report. Things are progressing with that. Apparently that they do have some very interested companies, but they can't release any information yet on anything. But it sounds like people are looking at it to get it back in the business of some sort. We had a business activity report, broadband internet service discussion, service frontage road discussion. So nothing really new, just kind of more of a review for Steve and I. The second item that I have, the Anoka County News volume came out. This is volume three dash twenty twenty-one. On page twelve, they have a Coon Lake Master Planning Initiative. If nobody has read this or not, I don't know if anybody else is familiar with this. It's a short article dealing with the Coon Lake County Park. And all that is in Columbus, but I'm sure it absolutely affects East Bethel residents. It says, "Last year, the Met Council requested submissions for additions to the regional parks and trails system. Regional parks typically provide access to a significant natural resource, draws visitors from outside the area, and typically have more than one hundred acres. Anoka County requested that Coon Lake County Park be added, and it was approved. Once a park becomes part of the regional parks system, the Met Council supports it with coordinated regional planning, funding, system protection, information, marketing, and advocacy. Now that Coon Lake is within the regional parks and trail system, a master plan must be developed. A master plan is a planning document that will guide future development of the park for the next ten to twenty years. It must address several items, including boundaries, development concepts, timing of development, operations, accessibility, and natural resources. First steps in the process are to engage the public for input and feedback on future plans to ensure the park is welcoming for all. The Parks Department is working on the Coon Lake Regional Park Master Plan in the coming months, so look forward for feedback opportunities in the near future. If you have questions or comments, contact Karen Velazca, Park Planner. Phone number, seven six three three two four three four one two." So I figured I would.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Do you know if they are required to solicit comments from?
All I know is.
Their communities?
All I know is what's in the article. So maybe.
Maybe we can look into it and find out.
Actually, we approved this from the Anoka County level a couple of years ago.
Oh, I remember it, yeah, yeah. But I'm asking about the plan. Is the county going to develop a plan in a vacuum without consulting with the cities that are involved?
I'll check with Karen.
I'm being facetious here, but I think, you know, knowing what that timeline is, I think it's helpful in letting them know that we would like to be an active member in that, so. Great. So thanks, Brian.
Yeah, with that, just say happy Thanksgiving. Have a safe holiday, safe Black Friday if you go out amongst the crowds. And hopefully a nice relaxing weekend.
Wanda?
I have nothing other than to wish everybody a happy holiday.
And I'm the same. Happy holidays, be safe, and enjoy your family's weekend. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. I mean, adjourn. Thank you, everyone.